All right, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
How do you know with you?
Members of council. So I'll start off by saying that we have two items on the agenda tonight. Norfolk Works, which is a response to council concern earlier, and then the storm water reduction program. I will tell you that the storm water reduction program is a mandate that we have, but that doesn't kick in until January, so we have a little bit of time. So I know that with 40 minutes left, I would like to respect the council's time, and if we needed to push that, it's not time sensitive.
Sure, let's go ahead and do the two, and then we'll save some time for council concerns. So if you want to go over your presentations for some.
Okay, that'd be great. So Mayor, members of council, I'll start off with Pete Chapman. And the concept here is Norfolk Works. And earlier this summer, an issue popped up dealing with how do we match the residents of Norfolk with the 6,000 jobs that are going to be coming online by 2018? 6,000 jobs just related to eight announcements. And that's when the mayor asked that we look at, that the administration look at an opportunity to see how we can make that match. I do believe that council member Graves, and also we've had some questions from council member Johnson about how we can do this. So what we have now is much like Ready to Thrive, much like Nighthawk Basketball, a pilot program, so we can implement quickly, but with a longer lasting impact, we hope, on the residents. So if that's fine with the mayor and council, I'd like to turn it over to Pete.
Pete? Okay. Thank you, Marcus. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. To amplify a couple of things that the manager indicated. So we were very much into rapid implementation mode, but this has also evolved from a pretty lengthy cross-disciplinary process involving community development practitioners, economic development practitioners, the city's anti-poverty czar Susan Perry. To really begin, and this is something else the manager has indicated during council meetings, to really begin to build a substantive workforce development model. So I'm going to take just a few minutes and walk you through the model. And one of the other things that has motivated us to resurrect this with you is that we are ready to move forward in earnest on a couple of key elements of this. So the model has three core elements, all right? One is facilitating access to jobs via good information. So it's really a function of communication and connectivity between job seekers and employers. Very straightforward. Skills development. And this lends itself to a much longer, deeper presentation, but we wanted to give you a quick overview of it. So we have a number of folks out there in the job market who don't have the wherewithal right now to really get traction in the workforce. So being interventionist, being very strategic, and I'd like to think that we are, we've invested a lot of energy and time into crafting several workforce development models that address this, and we're going to give you a quick overview of one of them tonight. And then, of course, partnership with employers. So my experience has been, not just in Norfolk, this is around the country, sometimes the term workforce development is used loosely, okay, to characterize certain programs that are very, very well-meaning. But one of the critical elements that's very often missing is the relationship with employers. I mean, if you want to facilitate long-term, sustainable employment with the target populations that we're talking about, you have to have a relationship with the private sector. So that's another core element for us. So we're doing very well, to state it mildly, in terms of attracting new businesses into this market and facilitating the expansion of existing businesses. And so just with respect to the deals that we've been actively working on, so the ADPs, the movement mortgages of the world, Norfolk Southerns, the Simons, you know, we are at roughly 6,000 new jobs that will emerge between now and 2018, which is very significant. So what we want to do is we want to capitalize on this success. And we want to do this with a number of economic development objectives and goals in mind, but we also don't want to lose sight of the city's overall focus on ameliorating and mitigating and ultimately reducing poverty. So that's very, very important to us, and I'm sure we'll talk in much more detail about that very soon. So how do we do this? So we are, for starters, we are establishing a platform, okay? A platform that involves creating a portal to, for folks, for job seekers, to access information on emerging jobs. And as you see, this will be a physical location, but there are other elements to it as well that involve good communication. And so we're working with Brent Kelly on strengthening the communications piece. And then, of course, as I indicated a second ago, there is the skills development element of the model, which is taking place on a very closely parallel track to the physical location that we're establishing, which is a job center, which I'll get to in a sec. So we are rolling out in October in partnership with a number of national and local stakeholders, including Opportunity Inc., Workforce Opportunity Services, very well-known national group. We are rolling out our first pilot skills development model that focuses on cybersecurity. So cybersecurity, as we know, is one element of information technology, and that is one of our sweet spots from an industry and sector perspective. So the long and short of that program is we will be targeting former military personnel and veterans who have lost some traction in the workplace and need some support, some industry-specific support. The first cohort will focus on 25 individuals, and it will provide them with, among other things, certification in cybersecurity. It will provide them with on-the-job training, and there is guaranteed employment at the end of the program, which is very significant. And the jobs will pay a living wage, so at about $13.50, $13.50 an hour. And again, we will give you more details on this very, very soon, but wanted to take this opportunity to update you. And then, of course, we want to implement this physical location, which I'm going to get to in a second. And we're calling this a pilot simply to give ourselves the latitude and flexibility to evolve the model over the next six to 12 months. And we think that it could also have some of the elements of our community business cafe. So let me just jump to some of the specifics of the place, the jobs center that we are establishing. So these are some of the core services that we will offer in this physical location. So job search assistance, issue-specific workshops, resume writing, these are the fundamental core elements, you know, of job seeker assistance. And then, of course, there will be onsite opportunities where job seekers can interface with members of various businesses. These are our potential partners, and this is not an exhaustive list. This is a representative sample of the sort of institutions that we are talking to. So at the end of the day, it's not just the city, but it's really a collective of private, nonprofit sector partners, many of whom occupy very important roles within the world of workforce development and job preparedness, both industry-specific and soft skills development. So the actual location that I've been referring to is going to be on the ground level of the Fountain Park Garage, so it's an asset that we own and we are going to leverage it. It is specifically on the Bank Street side, which we think is a terrific location, so adjacent to, or I should say, right between the Taylor and the Sandwich Shop. And so we think this is a good location for a number of reasons, not least of which it is centrally located and it is very close to Light Rail and our overall transit infrastructure. So we think this is a great location for those reasons.
And for selfish reasons, it's already furnished. There you go.
You know, I'm trying to be serious about this. That's a really good point. And I would be remiss if I didn't underscore the fact that it is also just walking distance to the offices of some of our new major downtown employers. So that's very significant. So you see the place right there, and kudos to IT and real estate because they've also been great partners in getting us to this point. We've got a little bit more work to do, but we're confident that we will be able to implement by the end of October. And implementation means open, it will be open for business. So the next steps, quite simply, are to continue to work with our various stakeholder partners, institutional and otherwise. We're working with Brent Kelly and his group on an overall marketing plan for the facility. And then, as I said earlier, the plan is to launch the pilot by the end of October. So this very, very high level, there will be more details, both on this center and on our skills development pilot, which I'm very excited about. But with that said, I will pause for any questions that you might have.
Mr. Johnson.
I would just like to say that this has been a long time coming. I think that our citizens will be pleased at what we're trying to do to help all of our citizens in our great city to know that there are 6,000 jobs and that the city of Norfolk is prepared to assist them with the skills that they need to be able to get the jobs in the city where they live. So I just want to say thank you to my colleagues on city council, Mr. Manager, Team Norfolk, for actually having this to be at our fingertips for our citizens, and they are just going to be pleased that we can help them in any way that we can to go get their jobs. So thank you.
Angela?
I really do like the idea, and I have concerns about, I know it's right there at Light Rail and all that jazz, but everybody doesn't do Light Rail, and so I have concerns about parking because it's a cluster downtown, and it's expensive also. So that's something that we have to take into consideration. How do we handle that? If people don't have a job, they certainly don't have money to pay to park in garage or to park in meter.
We can validate.
We can, okay. Make sure we don't overvalidate because we got the parking lot and got to pay for it still. But.
Take it to the market.
Yeah. And then, I, on the communication side, I just want to make sure that we don't go so high-tech that we forget snail mail when it comes to like our civic leagues and other organizations. Everybody, you know, I hate to say this, but everybody's not computer savvy, or as computer savvy as they should be. And so we don't want anybody to miss out on an opportunity just because they are not email interactive or Facebook or Twitter or whatever the case may be. So in whatever marketing plan that we put together and however we, whatever communication portion of the marketing plan we put together, we need to consider mail as well, just to, you know, cover all of our bases. And you answered the last question that I had about the job thing.
Tell me. Tell me.
You know, with Norfolk's initiative on Ban the Box and asking questions, are we partnering with employers who are also adopting the same philosophy?
Well, that's a part of what Pete's working through.
So had a meeting with one of those potential partners this morning, in fact. So yes.
Thanks. And so I would also like to add to some of the questions you had, Ms. Graves. The mayor has been engaging the faith-based community, and the faith-based community, I believe it was the pastors coalition last year did a job fair. And when Pete had up there some of the partners, they have already asked to partner with the city to have a bigger job fair. And a part of their messaging would be, as you said, reaching people where they are, and so that we don't take for granted that some forms of communication would not reach individuals. So we're excited about that being a part of the rollout also.
And that's excellent because we've been talking about for a while the way that the city communicates to its citizens, and it's more than just internet accessibility. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. Thank you, maybe, thank you, Peter. So what's next?
So we have David Ricks, who is going to, okay, very good. Mayor, if it's, okay, I think it's just a couple of minutes. It's on that same line. We can update Ready to Thrive, just another.
Yeah, let's do that. Come on, Sabrina.
So can you take just one second?
Sure.
So while I was out, I think Sabrina provided a presentation dealing with Ready to Thrive, and now we have some numbers that we would just like to share with council.
So on August 27th, Saturday, we had a great event at Norfolk School. The city and community partners really pulled together. We had over 50 partners that came to the table, either through donations or volunteer effort, or manning tables, or just serving food. Our city staff really came to a call when we put it out. Firefighters cooked the food, our police included, and obviously, of course. We just had an overwhelming support from the community and our staff. So just a few numbers, we had over 1,300 attendees, about 1,000 of those were children. We had over 200 city volunteers, and we had non-city volunteers, about 100. As a matter of fact, on Saturday morning, we just had churches showing up to volunteer, and I think that was thanks to James Rogers, where is he? Somewhere. Sent out an email. He got all these churches to show up. It was great to see them in their T-shirts. Forty-five schools were represented, where the students came from, and we served ages two to 18. While we said it was pre-K, which starts at three years old to 18, we didn't turn anybody away if they came. Again, the community partners, over 50 of them, I was really, really impressed. They, we just put out a call and just people just gave. Centura College, we had a problem with backpacks. At one point, they went out and bought 1,500 backpacks for the event. Staff stuffed them, we bought school supplies. It was just an amazing event. So just a couple of statistics, we had five top schools represented, PB Young, Jaycocks, Tidewater Park, Campus Dollar, and Norfolk Middle. Eight-year-olds, we're about 82 participants. Six-year-olds were about 88. We had about 140 that did not fill out the cards that we asked them to fill out, so they've been subtracted from that data. But again, we had everybody fill out the cards on ages and the schools that they were coming from. We didn't ask for any names or anything, or even addresses. Services that were received, community services board was there. Infant toddler program passed out a lot of information, about almost 150 to 200. We had Housing Authority that received, their clients received information. Hampton Roads Transit, they did over 150 student bus passes, the pre-bus passes. It was amazing to see them just sign people up. The Zoo came to the table, they provide family memberships for a day. Lions Club did 89 vision screenings. Norfolk Public Schools had parents sign up the Excellence in Education pledge. Public libraries, we had free books that we gave out, and they also signed up about 15 new library cards. Department of Health was amazing. They did school entry physicals. We had physicians and nurse practitioners at the day. They set up a whole medical facility. I think there were six physicians and nurse practitioners. They did 46 school entry physicals, and they did 24 immunizations. And Human Services also handed out some benefit applications, and Infant Toddler Program was in, identified children. So, I'm sorry. I want to recognize John Koenig, who's sitting in the back very quietly, our partner in all of this. In three weeks' time, we were able to get 1,300 people to this event. We did that just by, they sent out a letter, then we did a postcard, and we did, our CROs in the communities went out and did door hangers. We did no social media posts, we didn't do any media advertising, it was all Word of Mel and R and J and our police officers.
In other words, Sabrina, it was boots on the ground.
Boots on the ground, correct. As a matter of fact, yeah. And then, capturing on that momentum, the same, the following week, we had a smaller table, and we started to craft the longer-term Ready to Thrive program. So we've set up a steering committee, we've actually come up with a framework of how we will operate throughout the year, and we've established something called our R3 team, it's Ready to Thrive team. It's a little bit of a tongue twister. Norfolk Public Schools will be there, Community Services Board, Human Services staff, and we'll work with the school system with the identified 42 children as the springboard. Again, this is a pilot program. As we work through the framework and the ongoing services that are needed, it'll work sort of like the community assessment teams that we have, and we'll work with our neighborhood development department to be the leaders on what schools.
Sabrina, thank you very much, and to your team Norfolk, well done. Well done.
One, I'd like to ask you, Julia Martin. Yes. Oh, there you are. So she, I don't think she slept her whole week. We have to gather together.
David. Maybe you have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, talk about the stormwater fee reduction program. In a nutshell, we actually have an existing reduction program for stormwater fees, but it's very limited in basis, and based upon the new mandate from the state in terms of incentivizing basically people to help us with reduction in terms of pollutants. We need to revamp our program. A lot of municipalities are doing the same thing, and we're leading the area in terms of the Tidewater area. And I'll highlight in terms of the change of the program we could propose as a resolution to the policy and implementation of the program. Like I said, we've got to meet some regulatory requirements, and also we're going to incentivize people to help us reduce pollutants in terms of water quality, and also help with our In the presentation you had at the last council meeting from HRSD, there is a tremendous challenge in terms of the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, in terms of total maximum daily load reduction. And so that's one of the drivers in terms of what we need to do to incentivize, help us meet that goal. And so one of the things that we're going to look at is basically with this policy, to help us meet that with basic better technology to reduce pollutants in those areas. And so there's a state code, in terms of what that code is, you can see that on your screen, and then there's existing city ordinance, and we'll be making a recommendation to basically modify the ordinance to allow us to incentivize. And so, you know, the action for council, for future meeting, basically to look at the modification to the code and help us implement the policy, and then our Department of Public Works will monitor and track reductions. And so there's three pieces of this, a full waiver reduction, a partial reduction basically for non-residential, and partial reduction basically for residential. So full waiver for basically, for those facilities that have existing stormwater permit for their facility, and that basically your large institution like Naval Base, Norfolk State, ODU, Tidewater Community College, and also VDOT. Then also, the airport potentially could have a full waiver. They don't have a stormwater permit fee yet, but they are going to proceed to apply for that, then they will get a full waiver, potentially. And the impact to the budget is accordingly about $500,000. Overall stormwater fee, total dollar budget is about $16 million. And so the partial waiver is basically for residential, non-residential, and we're looking at basically 1% to 5% potential fee reduction, depending upon who wants to apply for the program. So the non-residential, basically, they will have to basically apply for a permit, and there's a criteria based upon water quality features that the state has mandated as a standard. There's about 30 types, different types of stormwater feature in terms of water quality that we will use as a criteria in terms of determining the type of basically the water quality feature of that. And once we do the engineering analysis, we'll indicate, here's your basically fee reduction, and then we'll give them the potential credit on a yearly basis. And so this is just a quick example in terms of how we would implement that. You see basically the yearly fee was about $3,100. And then if they have a dry pond, the criteria is as 20% efficiency. Then you do the calculation based upon the size of their total acreage and the size of the pond, and for them, they'll get about 13% reduction. And that basically be on a yearly basis, and in order to do that, and they would basically have to basically apply for that reduction on a yearly basis, assuming that they do the proper maintenance and keep it intact. And the residential, it's about somewhere, still to apply, and there's actually, we have developed basically a larger list of residential type of stormwater features that they, we could look at, and those are standard, like from a rain barrel, or like a dry pond, some other things. And so that's, and we'll use that same criteria like we do for non-residential. And then this table will be part of the policy, and these are basically based upon industry practices, consulting with other basically local municipalities, and this is the type of credit you can get. So for example, if they install one rain barrel, it'd be 10%. If they have several rain barrels, it could be more than that. And then if you go down the list, you know, if they did a green roof, it could be potentially 50% credit. And so that's be basically the criteria we would use to implement. And so the next step is that we're proposing this, the policy change to council and recommending for implementation, and then we will implement the policy starting January 1st. And then part of that, we'll actually do basically a communication plan to get the word out to basically businesses and residents in terms of the opportunity to help us meeting our basically our water quality requirements, and also helping with resiliency. So similar to what that I think at the one council meeting you talked about, Richmond is doing, and ours I think is better. I think we got a great staff, and so we'll be ready to go. But we're first basically in the Tidewater region in terms of implementing this potential new policy. Everyone's on the same level, but we're a little bit ahead of the game in terms of what we're going forward, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I just had one question.
Yes, ma'am.
So in the implementation of everything, are you partnering with environmental groups?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
We've got a few minutes for council concerns, Mr. Manager, if you don't have anything else. All right, Mr. Riddick.
Well, I tell you, I didn't think we were going to have.
Always, Mr. Riddick, always.
I'll tell you what, let me just pass, and I'll get to it later.
Okay, Mr. Smigle.
As many of you know, I'm very active in BML, and it would be great if we had more participation at the BML conference in October. I think there's only two or three council members that have signed up, so if you haven't done, so just to let you know, it's in Virginia Beach this year, then it's in Williamsburg, and then in Hampton, and then it will go to Roanoke, and then it will be in Norfolk in 2020. So we put in a bid, and they'll be negotiating for that conference if we're all still on council in 2020. And we're excited about that. Marcus.
...
Yeah. Marcus, with the storm, did we, with the governor's state of emergency announcement, does that open the city of Norfolk for any funds for damaged city property?
We would not qualify, it's so low, right, Ron, in terms of what would have happened for us, yes.
Okay, because there is damage that was done, and I don't know what kind of full assessment has been made in the city, but I know that there are signs that are missing, trees have been knocked over, flags have been destroyed. All the radar signs down on Ocean Avenue that we just put in, a lot of them are damaged now, and have been blown over, the solar signs are gone. So I'm just wondering what kind of assessment has been made in some flooding, obviously, damage though.
Because we have some of that. We can get that to council.
Okay, thanks.
Is this William Gray?
I have one thing, because the other thing's already taken care of, but it's from a constituent who texted me about wheelchair signage. She was a little offended that we were so easy to go ahead with the bike signage, and she had come down to council asking about wheelchair signage, and y'all know, you know who it is. It's our elderly senior citizen who has got the souped-up wheelchair, and she comes in. So I don't know exactly how to take this text message and make it an email, so I am going to text it to Winter in full disclosure, and let Winter figure out how to make it an email so that it can be preserved, and then you can do whatever. But we, it's really important for, to her. But we, it, it's really important for, to her and to other citizens who have to, to be in wheelchairs, to let people know to slow down, and to be cautious, and, you know, things of that nature. And so, I'm gonna...
Mrs. McCallum.
I have a few things, I'll go really quickly. One, I wanted to thank the manager and Mr. Riddick for the update on Waterside. I'm glad that we're moving ahead, and I will just let you know that I would love to have those updates before every council meeting, if we can. I just want to stay on those, it's very, very important. So, I'm glad that we're moving forward. I'm glad it was specifically noted that no residential development or spark office space will be included. I'm wondering, can any office space be included that's not part of a lessee arrangement? Maybe clarification on that would be great, too. That was number one. Number two, I have a constituent who's very concerned, and I can understand why, about the speeding on Hampton Boulevard. It's approaching past 55 miles per hour, right by Larchmont, and it is a drag race down there. So, to the extent that we just, I don't know what we can do there, that's a big issue there. I'm looking forward to meeting with Norfolk Public Schools at our joint meeting, and I'm going to be bringing up the issue of our bus system there, just to let everybody know. I've had a lot of concerns from other fellow parents of Norfolk Public Schools students who, the bus tracking is really an issue. And lastly, if we could get an update on the $5 million portion of the HUD and DRZ grant that's going to the accelerator, I have some entrepreneurs who are working on some things in the area, and I'd like to be able to provide that.
That's great. Mrs. Johnson.
I missed one thing, I'm sorry. Last Sunday, one of the members of our staff, who was like the glue and the lifeblood of our city, was honored at his church, and that was James Rogers, and he was honored for the exceptional work that he does in his church, and it's the exceptional, it's just like the exceptional work that he does here for us. And there were members of his, of our staff, and letters from the mayor, as well as the city manager, and so, and there were council and state representatives there, and I just, you know, I wanted to acknowledge that publicly, because there is, I don't know, that there is another person like James. We have some great people and do, you know, we do great things.
James, come take your bow, man.
We're gonna clone him before he retire.
Mrs. Johnson, we have about a minute, and Mr....
One minute. I can take care of the rest at another time. Today was the groundbreaking ceremony for the library, and it was great. It is a library for the entire city. It just so happens to be in the community of Broad Creek. I know that many of my colleagues could not be there because of work, but you were there in spirit with us, and it was a sight to see. Senior citizens were there, they rolled in on us. They had a pack with them. So, the senior citizens really mean business, but it was an opportunity for all of our scholars throughout the city to be able to have a facility, to have the opportunity to learn how to read, and explore, and dream, and do so many things, and I'm just so very thankful to everybody here. It was beautiful.
All right, Mr. Thomas.
First thing, I just want an update on when we're going to be looking at doing appointments to various boards and commissions. I know Planning Commission had a rough time getting quorum last week, someone had to drive in from vacation so they can make quorum, so hoping we can take that up sooner rather than later for their benefit. Tommy, I've got some citizens in Willoughby who are very jealous of your radar speed signs, so Willoughby is requesting if that, is that something that can be done, they'd like some radar speed signs.
I think they blew down that wave.
Next point, I, I thought we were a little rushed through David Ricks's presentation, and I'm really interested in things like that. Is there any way we can get the presentations in Dropbox beforehand, so we can kind of read them and be ready for them? And then, I'm hoping for two updates, one on the Technology Advisory Committee and its creation, and then I'd like an update on the status of the Selden Arcade, that's an important pass-through from the waterfront to the mall.
We have two resolutions. When we get upstairs, recognizing the service of our former council members, Barclay Nguyen and Andy Proggiaro, they could not be here today, unable to be here tonight, but they extend their sincere thanks and appreciation for the recognition, which is a tradition of, of the council. This will be added to the docket when we get upstairs, okay?